Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.
Yeah, just raise it. I'm calling to order the Wheat Ridge City Council meeting of March 28, 2011. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Karen Adams.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Good evening here.
Karen Berry. Joyce J.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
And Mike Stites.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 14, 2011?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Stites to change this to the minutes. Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to zero with two abstentions by council members Langworthy and Sang.
Thank you. We have one proclamation tonight. I'd ask Mrs. Wheat Ridge Karen Thaler from District One to please read the proclamation for Child Abuse and Prevention Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Wheat Ridge. Good evening. Whereas children represent our greatest hope for the future and deserve our support and protection, and whereas caring families and community representatives, including foster families, caseworkers, law enforcement agents, judges, and child advocates work diligently to keep abused and neglected children safe and healthy, and whereas we have the ability to strengthen families, build parental resilience, encourage collaboration, increase knowledge of parenting and child development, and provide concrete support in times of need, and whereas communities are stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse and neglect, prevention, and by providing a safe and nurturing environment for our children, we can ensure that the children of Wheat Ridge will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Therefore, I, Mayor Jerry DeTulio, do hereby proclaim April 2011 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, done and resolved this 20th day of March 2011.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commander Casa would have a few words he'd like to say.
Commander Casa, Acting Chief.
Thank you very much, and good evening to you. Along with this proclamation, I just wanted to address the council and wanted to recognize all the officers that we have in our department and detectives who work collaboratively with a variety of organizations and resources to help combat this serious problem of child abuse that we have not only nationally but internationally as well. So I wanted to kind of acknowledge some of those organizations that work with us regarding child abuse awareness, prevention, and investigation. The Jefferson County Division of Human Services, the First Judicial District Attorney's Office, the Ralston House, Victim Outreach Information, Jeffco Schools, Jefferson County Mental Health, and all other healthcare providers throughout the metro area. And we're particularly proud of the work that our team of detectives that are specially trained to investigate child abuse crimes. And those detectives are Detective Mark Sklavske, Detective Sheri Els, Detective Bradwith, and Detective Solomon Kirkpatrick. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item, not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward for public comment at the podium, and spell your last name for the record, and your city. Give us your city or your street. Anybody here for public comment? Please step forward and go ahead and form a line behind the podium.
Good evening once again. Karen Thaler, T-H-A-L-A-R, 6161 with West 29th Place and District One. I just wanted to say thank you to the Animal Commission. A couple weeks ago, I was invited by the Commission to come and share my personal experiences regarding feral cats. It was a very worthwhile experience, and I enjoyed sharing my stories. Thank you once again to the Animal Commission, and I appreciate the opportunity to once again be a voice in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record, and state your address or your city.
Thank you. Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O, 4070 Dover Street, Wheat Ridge, speaking tonight to you about and to the citizens about some activities and events and opportunities that Wheat Ridge 2020 has coming up that we hope that you'll engage in and encourage our citizens to engage in. First of all, on April 20th, we have another free energy efficiency workshop for citizens to help them identify how they can improve the comfort and energy efficiency of their homes. And I've provided the clerk with some handouts so that you can share those with your constituents. Also, on April 14th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., we're hosting another in our series of Live Local social gatherings here in Wheat Ridge. This one will be at Red Tango. Hope you'll all show up. It's a great restaurant, and it's a great opportunity to just network and visit with folks, find out what they're thinking. Wanted to remind citizens and council that Wheat Ridge also provides, as we're approaching time to do our gardening, a landscaping manual for Wheat Ridge. We all know lots of us have great big lots that can be really thirsty, and maybe instituting some of the water conservation suggestions in this manual would be a good idea. And that's available for free download from WheatRidge2020.org website. And while we're speaking of landscaping, Wheat Ridge 2020 is partnering with Livwell Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission to put on a garden tour this summer. So we're looking for great gardens. They don't have to be terrific gardens. You know, don't be afraid to contact us and suggest your home to be part of the gardening tour. And lastly, we're also putting together a mid-century home tour, and we're looking for homes to put on that tour to highlight some of the unique architecture that we have here in Wheat Ridge. So again, if we have any citizens or if you know in your own districts of mid-century modern homes that we could include in that tour, we'd sure love to hear about them. So thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Melissa Kry, K-R-A-A-I. Own a business at 4930 Iris Street. It's named Go Green Recycling. We offer single-stream recycling pickup services for small businesses and people in their homes. We also have a free recycling drop-off site in the City of Wheat Ridge at our warehouse off of 49th and Iris. Our mission is to create work for people who have developmental disabilities. We currently employ over 40 individuals with developmental disabilities. And I'd like to thank the mayor and the city manager and Steve Art for assisting us with letters of recommendation for a grant that we just applied for. With this, we hope to purchase equipment that will help our business to grow, create more work for people with disabilities, and expand the services that we're able to offer the City of Wheat Ridge and surrounding communities. So I encourage anyone who is lacking in recycling services to take advantage of our free drop-off site, and if you're interested in commercial or residential pickup, to give us a call. Google us at Go Green Recycling Wheat Ridge for our contact information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Marriott. It's M-A-R-R-I-O-T-T, and my business is at 4715 Kipling Street in Wheat Ridge. I'm also the chairperson of the Wheat Ridge Business District, and I'm here tonight to make a recommendation to you later on in the evening in your resolutions, decisions, and motions part of your council meeting, you'll be have a motion to appoint Janice Hoppy to the director's position at the Wheat Ridge Business District, and I would like to encourage you to do so. The Business District just had our membership elect two vacant or two expiring directors' terms, and then this appointment is one of the appointment slots to serve at the pleasure of the city. We feel Ms. Hoppy will be a fantastic director for the Business District. She owns a business on 38th Avenue and has also participated in our program. And so we'd like to encourage you to please approve her tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Charles Wharton, Nature's Prescription, 10107, West 37th Place. To our esteemed and honorable City Council and Mr. Mayor, from the citizens, patients, and caregivers of the City of Wheat Ridge, we thank you. The care, compassion, and concern you have displayed are greatly appreciated. We understand the mantle of responsibility you shouldered, are confident you debated the medical marijuana issue both intellectually and pragmatically before providing the just and prudent ordinance actualized on March 14, 2011. You have established a place in history. At least 14 other states, and most likely the entire United States, are focused upon how Colorado is going to address the medical marijuana issue. The State of Colorado has developed its own skeleton-like framework with the rules and regulations drawn from what the Department of Revenue knows best: liquor and gaming. However, even Senator Romer, who doesn't seem to understand the meaning of a constitutional amendment, has conceded to the ability of wise city governments to administer the law within their own communities. Our gratitude is founded upon the strength you have demonstrated in protecting all of your citizens in a safe, workable manner and with care and affection. As caregivers, we take the mantle shoulder to shoulder and assume our responsibility with dedication to proving your wisdom. Our mission is to provide the utmost in care for our patients, offer the highest quality medicine at affordable prices, educate the community as to the benefits and risks of medical marijuana, protect our youth by being scrupulous in our business practices, and to give back to the community embracing us. You have provided a workable model worthy of imitation. Thank you once again. Also, when we addressed you on March 14th, we neglected to vocally support Ms. White. A significant number of our patients suffer from multiple sclerosis, and we support any and all help toward research and a cure. Should anyone listening to this have multiple sclerosis or suffer from it, please come visit us. We may be able to help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment before we move on? Under approval of the agenda, by unanimous consent, we can add Item 10, which is a Planning Commission appointment, Item 11, which is a Martenson Street closer. Does anybody have a problem? By unanimous consent, Item 10 and 11? So the agenda will stand as amended, Items 10 and 11. Next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading on open the public hearing. Council Bill 07-2011, Councilmember Reinhardt.
I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 07-2011, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 26 in Adopting the Streetscape Design Manual. The city's current Streetscape and Architectural Design Manual was adopted in 2001, is largely outdated and lacks objective standards that are easy to implement. The architectural guidelines within this document were replaced by the Architectural Site Design Manual in 2007. The Streetscape Design Guidelines are still in effect but require comprehensive update. The proposed Streetscape Design Manual addresses each of the above issues. It clarifies what is required of new development and significant redevelopment and establish objective standards for the city.
We need a city clerk to assign an ordinance number?
Yes, thank you. Council Bill 07-2011 will be assigned ordinance number 1481.
And be able to have a staff presentation tonight?
Good evening. I'm Sarah Scholwalter, Planner 2, from the Community Development Department, and I have a brief presentation regarding the Streetscape Design Manual, which is case number ZOA 1005, and contains zoning code amendments that will enable adoption of the Streetscape Design Manual. I'd like to enter into the record the case file, ordinance, and the contents of this presentation. So the Streetscape Design Manual before you tonight is intended to replace an existing manual that was adopted 10 years ago in 2001 called the Architectural and Streetscape Design Manual. This manual actually had half of it is Streetscape Design Guidelines and half of it is Architectural Guidelines. The Architectural Guidelines have not been used for several years as they were replaced by the Architectural and Site Design Manual, or ASDM, in 2007. Those guidelines still remain in the manual, though, and it's a little confusing to the development community because we currently have two manuals with Architectural Guidelines and in terms of which one applies, that can be confusing. In terms of the Streetscape standards that are in this manual, the existing manual, they are difficult to enforce due to lack of objective measurements and dimensions. There's a lot of nice graphics in the document, but unfortunately, not a lot of language that enables staff to directly enforce the manual and if a developer comes in, be really clear about what Streetscape requirements would apply for the project based on the location of their project. The existing manual also contains outdated street typologies that don't match our pedestrian and bicycle master plan or a comprehensive plan. So the new manual will update those typologies so that they coincide with our existing plans. So one big purpose of the manual that's before you tonight is to remove those architectural standards that I mentioned that are no longer in use. So we will now have two design manuals. One is the Architectural and Site Manual, and one would be the Streetscape Design Manual. Another part of that is clarifying for the development community the rules and requirements as they're looking at a potential project. And to that end, we will also be establishing through this manual clearer minimum widths and standards for how wide sidewalks need to be on different streets, the character and width of amenity zones or buffers, which is the area between the sidewalk and the roadway, minimum spacing for trees and other amenities. We've tried to make those standards as clear as possible so that the rules are clear. This new manual, another component that it's adding, is a focus on six priority corridors that are identified in our comprehensive plan as priority commercial or mixed-use streets where we envision and are hoping to attract redevelopment in the city. The new manual, in terms of applicability, would not apply to any existing local residential streets. It really is geared more towards our commercial and mixed-use streets. So it would apply to any collector or arterial in the city, as well as a new local street serving mixed-use or commercial development where we imagine that most likely to occur might be at the planned transit-oriented development, for example, where there might actually be new streets put in. Those streets would apply, would have to follow the guidelines in this manual. Another important point to point out for applicability is that the manual only applies if there's new development or redevelopment that increases a building, its square footage by 50% or more. The manual would also apply if we did a city-funded, whether it was through bonds or capital dollars, if we did a city-funded street improvement project. Those improvements to the Streetscape would follow what's in the manual. And as I mentioned, one of the key elements of this manual is establishing some design intent and enforceable standards for priority corridors in the city. Those corridors, as I mentioned, were identified by looking at our comprehensive plan and where it identifies mixed-use and commercial areas. That includes Wadsworth, 38th Avenue between Sheridan and Wadsworth, most of 44th Avenue, across the whole city, except for a small portion that's residentially zoned, Kipling Street, Youngfield, and then finally, our future Transit Oriented Development, or TOD, area where the planned commuter rail station will be. And so for each of these priority corridors, the manual contains some language about the design intent. It sets minimum standards for sidewalk widths, the amenity zone, minimum spacing for pedestrian lighting and trees and other amenities that might be in the amenity zone. For most priority corridors that we have in the city today, the existing right-of-way is not enough to be able to fit in the sidewalk and amenity zone widths that we want to see. So easements or right-of-way would have to be taken. Sometimes it's just as small as a couple feet in order to implement these standards. The manual also contains a chapter with just general design guidelines that apply to all streets in the city and address in a little more detail especially guidelines instead of standards, what we're looking for in terms of quality materials when it comes to concrete and patterned concrete, tree grates, and benches, and ballards, kind of the quality of those materials in the Streetscape. We have been working on the manual that's before you tonight for almost a year now. There's been several drafts, and those drafts are reviewed by Planning Commission and two by City Council. We've had two study sessions with Planning Commission and two with City Council. Fairly early on, we also had a draft reviewed by the Active Community Environment Task Force that's been put together by Livwell Wheat Ridge. We got some great comments from the citizens involved in that group, and they were incorporated into the manual. Most recently, there was a public hearing before Planning Commission on February 17th, and Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval and adoption of the manual. I did want to point out that the last study session we had with City Council was in January. We had a draft that you all had reviewed, and there have been very few substantive changes to the manual since that study session in January. Two, the main two substantive changes I wanted to point out, and any changes that were made since that time are highlighted in yellow in the draft that we gave you in your packets. But one change was we added language that was in the existing manual that we thought was really helpful, that clarifies to applicants the agreements they would need to enter into with public works if they're going to be required to do Streetscape improvements to make sure that they're actually done and meet the standards. And then we also addressed one of the comments from council at the study session was to clarify whether fruit-producing plants would be allowed in the Streetscape in the right-of-way. So we did add language clarifying that fruit or vegetable-producing plants may be allowed in the right-of-way, but it'd be subject to review of the particular plant and location as part of the landscape review, just because there's some concern about maintenance, especially if it's going to be the city maintaining it with like a fruit-producing tree, for example. So we're certainly not trying to prohibit it, but did want to have a little additional review. So those are really the main substantive changes. There are a couple of other very minor changes, mainly based on comments from Planning Commission. And we've tried to develop a manual that really fits with the goals outlined in our comprehensive plan envisioned Wheat Ridge, which actually contains a recommended strategy that the city should develop a corridor design plan to identify primary corridors and create guidelines to ensure that they have a quality image. We recommend approval of the manual as we see that it really does promote those goals in the comprehensive plan for enhancing the character of the city along these priority corridors. And we're really hoping that it will clarify rules for development and make it a little easier for applicants as they're coming in to understand what their requirements are going to be. And that's all I have.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number one before I close the public hearing? Please step forward and spell your last name for the record, and please state your city or your address.
Thank you. My name is Ted Hyde. The spelling of the last name is H-E-Y-D. I'm the planning consultant for Livwell Wheat Ridge, and I reside at 917 South Cole Drive in Lakewood. Excuse me. Here tonight to first thank Sarah Scholwalter and Ken Johnstone for allowing Livwell Wheat Ridge to be a part of the manual review process. As Sarah said, back in the summer, they afforded us the opportunity to review a draft of the manual and to provide comments. We very much, as the Active Community Environment's Task Force, appreciated the opportunity to do so. And wanted to second Sarah's suggestion for recommendation of approval and adoption of the manual. We feel, as Livwell Wheat Ridge and as a task force, that it's a very well-thought-out document that speaks really with a visionary voice and thought towards the future of Streetscapes in the City of Wheat Ridge. Streetscapes serve many important functions along the lines of economic development, circulation, community and social cohesion. They are a very important part of a community's fabric. Just feeling, looking from cover to cover in the manual, that the document is very well-thought-out. Everything from pedestrian lighting to banners, to sidewalk widths, to planters, that it really does provide for, will provide for, a more livable community in the City of Wheat Ridge going forward. And Sarah Scholwalter touched on this, it does provide a very important element for the developer community when they're looking at prospective development in the City of Wheat Ridge, and that's predictability. This really does lend itself to coming in, providing for a project that is predictable. They know what they're up against. So with that, we would just very much like to support the adoption of this manual. We do feel that it does thoroughly provide for and support the concepts of active living, which is something we're very invested in in the Wheat Ridge community. We're pleased that it's arrived at this point in the process, and we would very much like to support its adoption. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for item one? Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussion and questions. Are there any questions or council comments? Close the public hearing and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 07-2011, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 26 in Adopting the Streetscape Design Manual on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Sarah, second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the main motion. Ms. Berry?
I just want to take, thanks Sarah and staff and all the community members that reviewed it. It's a greatly improved document, and they did a lot of wonderful work on it, so I want to thank them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Jay?
I too want to thank staff and the Planning Commission and Livwell Wheat Ridge. It's really a very excellent document, and it not only gives us a more attractive Wheat Ridge, the possibilities of it. When you go to the developer community, they can look at it and say, "This is what the city expects of me," and encourages them to build within our city, knowing that those rules have been established, and knowing that they can depend upon the future rules being there. Rules is maybe not the right word, but we will have a more attractive, vibrant city with the use of this. So I'm very excited about it.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you. I think there's been some buzzwords tonight that have been used that I have to reiterate, which is clarification for our business community, the process that we undertook as a staff. I want to thank Ken, Sarah. The work is The work is unbelievable. Being able to look back 10 years ago at the document that we had and being able to integrate some of those things are, was critical. As all working documents, we don't throw everything out that we first started with. There were some great things in there, and to be able to adapt those into this is remarkable. And also to the community that came, the business community, and the input. I think that staff listened to that. Staff listened to Council and Planning Commission, and I think we've got an incredible teamwork here with a great document. So I thank you to our staff and our community. It's super.
Mr. Stites?
I hope it works. Thanks.
Do we have a motion for approval, was seconded by Councilmember Sang? Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item two is Council Bill 11-2011. Going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Jay?
An ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Section 26-805, concerning non-conforming structures in the Floodway District and related sections of Article 7 of Chapter 26. This ordinance establishes standards for the maintenance of existing non-conforming structures for human occupancy within the city's established Floodway District.
Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 11-2011.
This ordinance was going to be continued to a future meeting. Is there anybody here from the public who'd like to speak on item number two before we continue it? Ms. Jay, would you want to go ahead and read the motion?
I move to continue the hearing on Council Bill Number 11-2011, An Ordnance Amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Section 26-805, concerning non-conforming structures in the Floodway District and related sections of Article 7 of Chapter 26 until April 25, 2011, 7:00 p.m. at City Council Chambers.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to continue to April 25th. It was seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the continuation. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. Item three is Council Bill 12-2011. Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 12, 2011, An Ordnance Amending Section 614 of Chapter 26 Concerning Residential Dumpster Regulations. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 12-2011, An Ordnance Amending Section 614 of Chapter 26 Concerning Residential Dumpster Regulation on First Reading. Order published public hearing set for Monday, April 11th at 7:00 p.m. in City Council Chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, was seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Discussion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item four is Council Bill 13-2011. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill 13, 2011, An Ordnance Amending Section 5, 17A5 of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge to allow homeowner building contractor licenses to perform electrical work. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 13, 2011, An Ordnance Amending Section 5, 117A5 of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge, allowing homeowner building contractor licensees to perform electrical work on first reading. Order it published public hearing set for Monday, April 11th, 2011, at 7:00 p.m. in City Council Chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, was seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next items on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item five, Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you. A motion to award ITB 1104, the 2011 Slurry Seal, to Foothills Paving in the contract amount of $215,411.25. The 2010 Slurry Seal Project will provide the needed maintenance treatment to various local streets throughout the city. The Slurry Seal Treatment will rejuvenate the wearing course and reduce water infiltration under pavements. The treatment will extend the pavement life of these streets as part of the ongoing maintenance program. This project is the second of three preventative maintenance projects that the city will implement this year. The apparent low bidder is Foothills Paving, Golden, Colorado, in the total amount of Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to award ITB-1104 Slurry Seal Project Base Bid and Bid Alternate Number One to Foothills Paving, Golden, Colorado, in the amount of $215,411.25, with a contingency amount of $21,541, for the cost of other items related to the project. I further move that the Director of Public Works be authorized to issue change orders up to a total contract and a contingency amount of $236,952.25. I further move that all costs associated with this contract be paid from account number 30-303-800-884, and that these funds be encumbered for the length of the project in accordance with ordinance Number 787, 1989, series.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, was seconded by Councilmember Stites. Do we have anybody here from the public to speak on item five? Discussion on the main motion from council? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
I thank you. Item six, Councilmember Jay?
This is a motion to appoint Janice Hoppe as the City Director to the Wheat Ridge Business District Board of Directors. The Wheat Ridge Business District is managed by a Board of Directors. Eight directors are elected by the district membership to serve for three-year terms with no term limitations. Three directors are appointed by City Council and may, from time to time, be replaced. The council appointees may be, but not, need not be, members of council.
Motion's in order.
I move to appoint Janice Hoppe as City Director on the Wheat Ridge Business District Board of Directors, term to expire March 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of Janice, seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt and Demott. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
And the motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item seven, Councilmember Reinhardt?
Item number seven is a motion to appoint members to the, a member to the Building Code Advisory Board. The Building Coaters Advisory Board is an appellate board to decisions of the chief building official, and we are filling that panel up. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to appoint Ralph Santangelo to the Building Advisory Code as an at-large member with the term to expire in March 2nd, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for Ralph Santangelo, at-large, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item eight, Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. A motion to approve payment to AMEC Earth and Environmental, Inc., in the amount of $113,982 for energy assurance planning. The contract with AMEC Earth and Environmental, Incorporated, is for the analysis, training, and the development of a local energy assistance plan, LEAP. The funds are provided through a grant from the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. The city of Wheat Ridge received an award of $130,000. $116,000 was earmarked to hire a contractor to develop the plan, and $14,000 was targeted for additional expenses. Funds over the contract price will be used for training, materials, and reimbursement for staff time spent on the project. The purpose of the grant program is to provide funding for local government to develop capabilities for responding effectively to energy emergencies caused by weather-related events, natural disasters, or terrorist attacks. This grant provides funding for the city to identify and assess energy supply disruption scenarios and train city personnel to restore and recover from an energy disruption event. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve payment to AMEC Earth and Environmental, Inc., in the amount of $113,982 for energy assurance planning.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, was seconded by Councilmember Sang on item number eight. Discussion on item eight? Please poll the council.
And the motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item nine is a motion to set fees for medical marijuana businesses. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you. Motion to set fees for medical marijuana businesses and primary caregiver license applications. On March 14th, 2011, council adopted ordinance 1479 concerning the licensing of medical marijuana businesses and primary caregivers. Currently, the city does not have any specific license application fees concerning these new city licenses, because the city may begin processing applications for these licenses on April 1st, 2011. Council should consider adopting fees that will cover the cost of processing the license applications pursuant to Code Sections 11297 and 11322 and ordinance 1479. Those fees may be adopted by motion. A proposed fee schedule for council's consideration is attached.
Motion's in order.
I move to set the non-refundable fees for medical marijuana businesses and primary caregiver license applications required by Code Sections 11297 and 11322 as provided in the fee schedule, and that it become effective as of April 1st, 2011. I further move to set the initial application fee for the three medical marijuana license types at $1,000, and the renewal fees for each of the three licenses at $1,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a main motion with amendments setting the fees at $1,000 for initial and reaplication. Is anybody here to speak on item number nine? From the public? Discussion from council on the main motion as amended? Please poll the council.
I think, Karen?
Ms. Adams?
Thank you. As that was being read, it said here that council should consider adopting fees that will cover the cost of processing the license applications. I guess I would ask that that fee will cover those application costs, the processing costs. Is that correct? I mean, who knows that? Patrick?
Sorry, your question is, will this cover the cost?
The processing.
Yes, it will.
That will cover the processing. And so the processing of that, of each of those would be around $1,000. Is that correct?
We did an analysis, and the actual direct cost, it's about $310, but there are additional costs that are not, not being able to be calculated at this time, which could make it
Higher.
Be higher than 310.
Thank you. That's all I have.
The main motion with amended fees?
I guess, I would like, I don't necessarily have a question. I just, I would like Joey to kind of let us know what, because I think that you have some really good reasonings why you made this motion, so I'd kind of like to hear what they were, just so the public understands why we're dropping from 310 to 1,000, not because it's a bad.
Well, initially, our ordinance mirrored a lot of things in our liquor license code. And our ordinance from 15 months ago went from 40 pages, it's now about 20 pages. There's a lot less items that the state took care of. A lot of the neighboring cities have license fees $3,000 and above, and since we're not really sure, we can't really foresee what the costs are going to be on these, it's not going to be like a regular business. We know that, but we don't really know what they are. I just, I think that $1,000 is not as much as you would pay for a liquor license, actually. It's about $600 less than you would pay for a liquor license if you were selling beer with pizza, for instance. And, you know, it's still, it still should cover costs should something strange pop up that we may have overlooked.
Thank you. Now, I do have another question. Patrick? At this time, these are our fees. We don't know yet if the state's going to impose fees as well? Or I guess, Jerry?
I'm sure that the state will. When the state finally gets its licensing process in place, I'm convinced they will have a fee for a state-level license that these operations will also have to pay. I have no idea what that number will be, and I don't think the Department of Revenue knows yet either, but I'm certain there will be a fee.
Thank you.
Any other questions on item number nine? Please poll the council on the amended motion.
And the motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item 10 is a Planning Commission appointment for District Four. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appointment to the Planning Commission for District Four. There's currently a vacancy in District Four in the Planning Commission. Councilmember Langworthy and myself request that Tracy Gilner be appointed to the Planning Commission, term ending March 2nd, 2014.
Motion's in order.
I move to appoint Tracy Gilner to the Planning Commission, term to expire March 2nd, 2014.
Sure, bud. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, was seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Discussion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item 11 is a street closure for Martinson Elementary. Councilmember Jay?
Motion to approve the closure of West 45th Place and Newland Street for the Race to Read fundraising event on Saturday, April 23rd, 2011, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The Martinson Elementary Parent Teacher Association is organizing the fundraising event for the school. It is requested to close 45th Place from Pierce to Newland Street, and Newland Street from 45th to 46th. Let me read a little bit of the background here. Martinson Elementary Parent Teacher Association is organizing a fundraising event with the intent to raise kids' interest in reading. This has been an annual event called Race to Read. The PTA desires to expand the event by utilizing the streets adjacent to the school for additional staging area when the previous year's event were confined to the school lot.
Motion in order? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the closure of West 45th Place and Newland Street for the Race to Read fundraising event on Saturday, April 23rd, 2011, from 8:00 to 2:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, was seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the street closure? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our agenda for tonight. Move on to city managers' matters?
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
We have excited crowd members here, from Martinson. We have to revote, though. It was, that was. City attorneys' matters?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk's matters?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Berry? Councilmember Reinhardt?
Not tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I wanted to remind everyone, I'm sure if Mike might be doing this, that the large item pickup program has begun, and it's a first-come, first-served, and hopefully, community members will take advantage of that as we get into our spring cleanup. Also, there's a new Promote Your Business Wheat Ridge, Promote Your Wheat Ridge Business. City of Wheat Ridge announces the initiative called Shop in Wheat Ridge, and we have links to local businesses to our city website to help promote our businesses, and I think that's going to help give, build our businesses up and promote them through our city website, and we're going to be able to link up to your business to our city website. So please, 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 take advantage of that and spread the word. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Sang?
I think tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Demott?
Thank you. I just wanted to, the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority is doing some new things. We received a block grant three months ago, and we closed on seven houses that we've bought that were currently rentals, and we, as always, as in the past, were fixing them, and we're going to sell them. They'll be in affordable housing. We got to two or We've got two or two of the houses that are empty, and they've got plans drawn, and very exciting stuff going on, and it should be, within the next few months, be very exciting for the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority, and we'll be sure to keep you updated. That's all, thank you.
Ms. Jay?
I'm dying to add on to Ms. Adams' comment about the large item pickup. I don't know if you said that the date, the cutoff date for calling in and getting a reservation is next Monday, April 1st. So while the pickup is in May, there's only going to be 500 pickups allowed in the city. So if you're interested, you have some old sofa out in the backyard, that you might want to give them a call by this, or starting this Monday, not before, starting this Monday.
April 4th, not the 1st.
April 4th, I said 4th, I meant April 4th, thank you, Wanda. And this doesn't, I don't think they allow refrigerators, or computers, that sort of thing, but April 4th, that's when you can start calling.
There's a list on the website.
It's on the website, right.
What can be picked up.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah. You know, each time I talk about this, it's an excellent time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge, and it's getting very successful. On 38th alone, we're going to have a new Peruvian restaurant, and the building is looking fantastic. We're also going to have a shoe store opening up pretty soon, so it is an excellent time to relocate your business and/or home to Wheat Ridge, and if you need any help doing it, boy, we've got a new economic development guru now that's doing pretty good, we got staff, we've got us, so contact anybody and we'd be glad to help you. As always, please try to do a positive thing for either your family, your community, your school. With things coming up, watch weeds coming up, because I'm going to harp on weeds all summer long, so watch them. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you. I'd just like to extend congratulations to Exempla Lutheran Hospital for receiving the Genesis Award at the Jefferson Economic Council Industry Recognition, so, thank you. And also, thank you for the young girl who came out to a council meeting, which is very, very boring, and threw the whole thing, so thank you very much.
It's a boy.
Oh, it's a boy! Sorry.
Nice job.
I know.
He's a good son.
You were very excited, I thought, I'm sorry.
Well, on that note.
I know.
I wanted to reiterate what Councilmember Demott mentioned. The Jefferson County Housing Authority is actually looking to move away from single-family homes, and they're buying more multifamily for senior housing, so I was really glad that Joe and I were able to meet with Jefferson County Housing Authority and secure these seven properties within the city of Wheat Ridge. And for, when you think about it, Wheat Ridge Housing Authority with CDBG funds acquired seven single-family homes for less than, almost right around $900,000, and all those properties will be rehabbed and turned around and sold to first-time home buyers, or in that price range, that's affordable. So it's really great to see that the Housing Authority is moving forward, they're still using the same $1.1 million they started with little over 10 years ago, that's because they've been able to leverage their funds with CDBG, plus they have no overhead costs like rent and staff time. The only staff time that the Housing Authority really has is when they're paying their general contractor, which is part of the project, or they pay some of our staff here at City Hall, when those folks work on the project, like Sally Payne or Ken Johnstone. So kudos to the Housing Authority, who've re-engaged in the last couple of months, they'll be rehabbing quite a few, seven properties in the city of Wheat Ridge, and they can sell it at market price, or less, depending on the purchaser. So that's good news for the city of Wheat Ridge. And I wanted to also read a letter from Cindy Stevenson to the Mayor, Dear DeTulio, and Members of City Council. Dear Mayor DeTulio and Members of City Council, thank you for sending me your resolution opposing the closing of Martinson Elementary School. As I'm sure you know, this was a very difficult decision, as were all the proposed reductions developed by the participants of the employee summit. The district is facing unprecedented budget reductions due to state's budget crisis. I appreciate your advocacy and hope you will attend one of the budget forums scheduled in April. Sincerely, Cynthia Stevenson, Superintendent. So please try to attend those public hearings for budget coming up here in April. And then I also received another letter today I wanted to read, this is from a resident, Mr. Larson, who lives in Wheat Ridge on 35th Avenue near the new park. He says, "Dear Mayor DeTulio, compliments for Discovery Park continue to be heard, some from unexpected sources. A local man, probably in his 90s, walking around the park told me I was against spending money on the park, but, you know, the city of Wheat Ridge finally did something right. On nice days, parents and grandparents are taking young kids to the recreation areas. My wife Roberto promised you copies of the pictures of the park's evolution from field to completion and dedication." They are attached in the CD form." So this person, who also was part of the discussion, wrote a song about Wheat Ridge, and he's from, he's from, I'm not going to sing it, though. So what I'll do is I'll have this, we'll put it on the website, it's, the gentleman's from Eastern Bloc, the former Eastern Bloc area of Russia, so he wrote a song about Wheat Ridge and the park, and I can't read it because I forgot my glasses, so I can't read it.
Good excuse there, Mayor, good excuse.
Dean Martin, I'm not, so. Any other questions or comments before we adjourn? We'll take 10 minutes, and we'll come back on the dais for the study session. We're adjourned.